All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:05 PM on Tuesday, August 15th, and we'd like to welcome everybody to the Policy Committee meeting. We have Ms. Darling.
Here.
And we have Ms. Johnson, we have myself. Ms. Lampier is running a little bit late. We have Mr. Castellano and Mr. Farley. We have Mr. Poska. And in the audience tonight, we have Mr. Sahu, who is our former student of the Board member. And unless there's any objections, I'd like to invite Mr. Sahu to come sit in the U with us for old time's sake. If he's interested.
Yes, please.
All right. Pick a chair, any chair. Oh, and here's Ms. Lampier. Perfect timing. Okay. So tonight, we had talked about at our last meeting, making tonight more of a working session than our typical policy meeting, simply because most of the policies we have for discussion tonight are policies about the Policy Committee. And so it seemed to me that it made more sense to give everybody copies of our policies and the School Board Association's versions last month so that we could look at them, kind of do some word smithing on our own, and then come together and really dig into the meat and potatoes and the words here, instead of having something that's a little bit more edited before we get here. So on that note, I'd like to start with BBBF, which is student members on the Board of Ed. And I'd like to hand it off to Mr. Castellano, who had approached Mr. Poska and I recently about editing this policy to give students an honorary vote.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, that's the main thing Warren and I wanted to talk about tonight with this policy was including or adding the inclusion of a symbolic vote. And that vote would be like recorded probably, but not necessarily, it would not impact the results of the Board vote. And we feel that would just be important to kind of give students more of a role. Although I know we can like give feedback and speak on anything that's discussed during meetings. But this will make it even more so. Give us kind of like the feeling of being a Board member. And then I actually heard this idea back last year when I went to, or no, earlier this year in the spring, when we went to the, it was like a conference for different student Board members from across the state. We weren't able to remember which school was using that, but they, they said they had been using it. And yeah, we just really liked the idea. So we wanted to get feedback on what you guys thought.
Any comments or questions?
So I'm a huge advocate for this. I've seen it, I've seen other groups talking about like having more participation from student Board members. And considering we're all here for the students, hopefully, that your guys' futures are the best outcomes that we could be looking for, I think it's important to hear the input. And it would give you a more realistic experience on the Board of what it, what it really feels like. I would also love to consider having the students assigned to a committee, like honorarily, and participate in that committee. Or who knows, even if they float between the committees throughout the year, get some experience in each section.
Yeah, that's funny. In fact, I was actually gonna, that was another thing we were gonna talk about was like at the beginning of their term, or how I, how I had it worded was like, join a committee at the beginning of the term and attend all those meetings, just like how we're expected to attend the normal Board meetings. Just again, to kind of get more of a realistic experience and more involvement. But that's also another option, just even floating between committees. But yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Lampier, and then Ms. Johnson.
I am in support of this. I can't imagine anything more frustrating than sitting in a meeting for three hours and then not being able to vote. I, you know, I've read the, the policy and, you know, it says clearly non-voting. So I think that we would have to really discuss how we were going to record the votes and to make sure that you guys would have a chance to abstain if you wanted to. And I would be curious, I, I'd be curious if we could find out which school it was. We could see how they handled it in their policy and if, and how it's turning out, how it's going. But I, you know, I would, I would, I would vote to go to move this to the, to the bigger Board.
Just, I just want to mention that Mr. Poska and Mr. Castellano, and I did like query other school districts. And I did a, I did an exhaustive several hour search of other school districts' policies. And I couldn't, I just couldn't find where anybody had it written in their policy. Now, it may be that there are districts that have the practice without having it written in a policy. I just couldn't find it written down. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
I pass for the moment.
Okay.
And you can come back to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sahu?
Um, wow, it feels weird to be back. Hello, members of the Policy Committee. My name's Semay, in case you don't remember me. I was, I proudly served on the Board of Education from 2022 to 2023 as Nashua South Student Representative. And I'm going to be attending Dartmouth College to study government and economics in the fall in an effort to understand how the government, citizens, and elected officials such as yourselves can work together to properly act on the best interest of all. I was invited here to speak in regards to Policy BBF, the student members on the Board of Education. So I kind of want to give a little bit of an insight to my time while I was on the Board. So as my time as student representative, I'm proud to say that I believe that I gave the students of South an outspoken representation. And I believe that due to my actions, I was able to make life better for some students, hopefully. Unlike any student representative duo that came before Armani and I, we had to deal with a lot of public attention hate and even racism at times. But besides that, the term was very successful. And we promoted and pushed through very successful agenda items such as COVID safety, input into the new middle school, class rank and weighted GPA, which was the notable one. I'm aware that as of January 2023, the New Hampshire law prohibits local Board of Educations from allowing their students to have a vote. But I'd like to see the district amend the current policy to allow for a symbolic vote as proposed and suggested, an amendment which would not violate state law. I have talked to many future classmates and colleagues of mine at Dartmouth who did serve as student members of the Board and some who did have voting rights in their hometowns. And I actually took note of some of the accomplishments that they were able to highlight under their terms, something that I think would be interesting for you all to hear, the potential of what this could do for future student members of the Board. So one student brought free menstrual products to four schools in one year, and at least two dispensers in all county middle and high schools in the fall. Another fought for countywide equity through budget amendments to correct differences in unequal course offerings across zip codes. And another pushed for advancing financial literacy, so that all county high schools in the district now offered an optional course covering taxes, mortgages, student loans, and more. One that I, a course which I think would be very useful for all students in our own district. I think that those are three examples alone of just the potential of how farther we can take the student member of the Board position and that by increasing their representation, even through a symbolic vote, they can make their opinion firm amongst their colleagues on the Board of Education, which I think would be a positive influence on the Board of Education, but most importantly, the Nashua community. So yeah, that's my thoughts.
So Mr. Sahu, if I can ask you, one of my concerns about this, let me back up a second. So far in my experience over the last six years, anytime a student member has brought stuff to the attention of the Board or added an opinion, it has enhanced our discussion and it has enhanced our understanding of the topic that we're discussing. So I think it's been really important and beneficial to have student voice at the Board. However, I've also seen students targeted, both on social media and in public comments, for their, their opinions on the Board. And I worry that this would open up students to another level of scrutiny. Do you have any concerns about that? Like for me, watching, watching students get, having to deal with, you know, racist comments. And we can stop them when they come out, but we can't anticipate when people are going to say something. It, it makes me very uncomfortable and worried to put, you know, students in that position.
Yeah, I, I totally understand where you're coming from. Like I was literally in that same.
I know, I sat right next to you.
Right. It was a very rough meeting, to say the least. I'll, I'll be honest. But I think that's part of, I learned that's honestly part of the responsibility of being on the Board of Education, whether you're a designated student member or you're a regular member. You're almost, you're representing your own constituents. And that inherently will make you open to criticism and hate, as unfortunate as it sounds. I will say though, that those who run for these positions to represent thousands and thousands of students, not only in their high school, but like the middle schools that they came from, the elementary schools that they came from, things like that, they have had a lot of maturity to get to this point, just to even come to the conclusion that they want to run for a position with such an immense responsibility, that if we are to amend Policy BBF, I think it would be in the best interest to do it starting from the following calendar year, to have this change into effect so that schools, student activities directors, administration can let their students know, look, this is an additional and new responsibility which would come with the position. Those who are willing and will know the risks, they will run and hopefully be elected. But I also think that the members of the Board of Education, main office, things like that, during hard times for me, they had, the Board had my back. Ms. Bishop, the, the next meeting, she had a whole like five-minute statement disavowing all the comments made. And all of the Board members stood behind my side, as well as Dr. McKinney. He immediately called my family, had my back. I understand where you're coming from, and I think that's a very valid concern. But I think that with more hate, our Board members are going to be stronger and more resilient in tough times. But I think that it's nothing that the students aren't prepared for.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Darling, and then Ms. Johnson.
Semay, I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly, because this was back in the very beginning, during teacher contract negotiation, which obviously, as a student, you were not part of almost any aspect of that. Did you ever feel like pressured at school from adults or staff of any kind of, from parents of other students you know? Because my thought is if that's something you were dealing with, then it wouldn't necessarily be any different if you did have an honorary vote.
Yeah. I will say that specifically during the teacher union contract negotiations, part of my time on the Board of Education, I did not have any teacher input or like teacher opinions which are like put on me in any negative way like that. I will say that I was able to have a very open conversation with the teachers and some who didn't know exactly what was going on behind the scenes. And I was kind of able to be a beacon of understanding from my perspective on the Board of Education with the information that I knew. I will say though, that during the class rank and weighted GPA time, there was a lot more student influence, student impact, student opinion, as well as parents as well. There was like WhatsApp group chats with hundreds of hundreds of parents all from the same neighborhood as myself. So I will say that's something that I was accustomed to. Armani and I were accustomed to, even without a symbolic vote.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Do you know the state law that you were referencing, RSA what?
I don't, but I can get back to you on that really quickly.
Yeah, I'd like to see the.
19423F.
19423F?
Yep, same one you have.
Yep. Okay. I'd like to study that a little bit. And some of the classes, I agree that, you know, class on finances, which checkbook checking, all that. I thought we had that at the middle school at one time. And we were teaching students on finances. So that wouldn't be anything that we would need to put in if we already have, or we don't want to duplicate things.
We don't have financial literacy for today.
Well, we did at one time, thank you.
At one time, yes, but not.
Okay, but that's something that we can talk to administration about to get back into the curriculum, because we should have that back in the curriculum. I don't know if I could support this. I mean, first of all, even an honorary vote on a contract, I wouldn't want you to do, because that's a very sticky thing, a contract. From the, you'd have to really know the insides of a contract, and the teachers' contracts and everything, which a lot of us, you know, there's a lot to know about a teacher's contract. I have to really study this a little bit more, because, I don't know. I don't know. There's a lot to the Board, there's a lot to, on these votes, especially where we're elected by the taxpayers, the voters of the city. And we're here to do a certain, we're here for a reason. And you're here for a reason also. But I think input sometimes is better than even voting. So I hope that we're going to have more discussion on this around the Board, that we're just not going to be pushing this through immediately, that it will come back to policy again for more discussion and to iron everything out, the language.
Well, I think that's kind of what tonight was for and why I had passed out some of these policies and let people know a month ago that this would be coming up. I saw Semay, Warren, I'm sorry, Mr. Farley, did I see your hand or no?
No.
No, okay. And then Mr. Poska after.
Yeah, I actually, I just wanted to like highlight some of the things that you brought up, Ms. Johnson, because there are some things that I completely agree with you on. Well, first, we should be promoting financial literacy in this school district. That's, that's, it's a whole topic on itself. But there are sticky aspects of being a member of the Board, as well as being a student member of the Board. It's not the same position, with all honesty. There's a significant difference. And I think that there are some aspects that I would agree, that I wouldn't want student members of the Board voting on, things that go through non-public, things that they don't have all of the full information. To me, it wouldn't make sense to have the student members of the Board voting on. So that's just something for the Policy Committee to hear my thoughts on that, just so that they could consider that while they iron through the language. That's a particular subject area where I just wouldn't want students voting on. But yeah, I, I do think though, that it is, it would be an added benefit in ways that we can't even foresee at this point, to even give a symbolic vote. But we'll just see how it works out, I guess.
And just, I'm sorry, just to go back to the RSAs. So RSA 19423F has several provisions about student members and what their responsibilities are. It doesn't say anything about voting at all in RSA 19423. Well, it just, it says that if, it says, "Any student who will graduate during the term's duration is not eligible to be a candidate and is not eligible to vote." That's all it says. It doesn't say anything about symbolic votes, non-symbolic votes, you know, being barred from voting or allowed to vote. It just says if you're graduating, then you can't serve. 189C is the RSA, it's very short. And it just says, "The School Board shall have at least one non-voting student member from each public high school maintained by the local School Board within its district." And then it says, "The power still be described in RSA 19423F." So it does say that we have to have at least one non-voting student member from each public high school, but it doesn't say that members are prohibited from voting, which I think isn't important. But go ahead, Mr. Poska, and then I'll read what we kind of put together.
Sure. First of all, I think, you know, some of the things that Ms. Raymond said earlier, you know, talking about the student participation, it does add some significant conversation and some, some weight to what we're doing. Mr. Castellano, Mr. Farley appropriately came and asked if we could have some discussion about this. And I think there was an opportunity to have this. When Ms. Raymond and I were planning for this meeting, we were talking about what we'd like. And we, we invited Mr. Castellano, Mr. Farley here to present their, their ideas. And I think they went into the bullpen and brought in, you know, you know, the closer here to help support this work. And I appreciate that too, because I think it adds to that. You know, to Mr. Sahu's, you know, comments earlier, Ms. Raymond and I did have a conversation. We referenced kind of some of the, you know, the experiences that you and Armani went through earlier. And again, I only have a brief, you know, just one-year experience here. And, you know, I remember coming to see you at South after a meeting to kind of check on you and how you were doing. So I, I think there are some concerns here. I think one of the things that I have really applaud the Board for is how they go out of their way to encourage participation and student voice to all the conversations and topics that we have. At no point have I seen the Board kind of prohibit students from, you know, Dante or Warren, from sharing their ideas. You know, I do have some concerns with putting students in positions where they, you know, they make a vote and it becomes, you know, obviously, these are public meetings and they, you know, a lot of people hear what's going on. You know, last year, you know, we didn't have the public vote and Armani and Semay were, were, you know, very publicly, you know, called out on some things. So I do have some concerns. I do applaud the, the Board for promoting student participation and voice here. And I think it, it does lead to some more conversation, you know, for possibly the whole Board to have. But I think this has been a really good start to have this conversation. So thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Poska, and I must apologize to the Committee. I failed to scroll when I was reading 19423F. And now that I have scrolled, the line says, "One or more students from among its members to be non-voting members of the School Board for the district in which the high school is located. A student member have, shall have all the rights of a regular School Board member regarding School Board business, except the right to vote, period." I think one way that we could consider addressing it is in our policy, we have that line under paragraph five, or I, you know, number five on the list. It says, "A student Board member shall have all the rights of a regular Board member regarding Board business, except the right to vote." I would propose that we put a semicolon there and then write, "Student members may opt to cast a symbolic vote on motions before the Board." And that way, we're not requiring it. And we're being very clear that it is symbolic and not a right to vote. It's a, it's a choice if a student member feels strongly about something or if they simply want to get in the habit, but not a requirement. I still worry about, I worry about opening kids up to the type of bullying that we see in politics today. And we shouldn't see it at the local Board level, but we do. Castellano?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Semay too for coming out and thank Ms. Darling for inviting him. That was a very smart idea. But anyway, I definitely agree with Semay just on the parts about like people who are running for this position, definitely, they kind of know what to expect. And also, at the same time, if we're encouraged to like speak on issues and stuff like that, we're just as open to criticism as we would be if we had some sort of symbolic vote. And I mean, in some instances, it is very similar, having a symbolic vote or just speaking on things. I just felt like symbolic vote is more, I don't know. It's just easier to understand in the policy, I guess.
So that's my suggestion, is that we do that edit under number five. And then also on BBBF, if you look at item two, it says, "Student Board members will serve for one calendar year commencing at the organizational meeting of the Board in January." I would put a bullet under that so that it matches the formatting of number six and say, "Student members may choose to be assigned to one or more Board standing committees." Again, I don't want to make participating in the standing committees a requirement of for student Board members, because it's not part of the law. And we know that our student Board members tend to be very busy. They're involved in clubs and extracurriculars and athletics. And we don't want this to get in the way of, of your academic experience. But I certainly, I'm personally not opposed to putting in there the option of saying, hey, I'm really interested in curriculum. I'd like to serve on that committee, instead of just coming, you know what I mean? Having it be an official thing. Ms. Johnson has an opinion?
Yeah.
That's all right. That's why we're here, right?
Ms. Johnson always has an opinion. What else is new? But I just want to say to come to a committee meeting, will give you a better understanding when it comes to the vote at the full Board, why we came to this conclusion. And it does, that's why I come to the policy and I try to come to as many committee meetings as I can, even though I don't serve on them. Because when it comes to the full Board, you understand why the discussion is there, why people are wanting to vote on it. As far as the vote again, and you're talking about, you know, when you come to the meetings and you have an opinion and, you know, you get criticized. Your criticism is worse when you vote on something than when you just speak on it. And I would hate to see the students, adults in the community, getting angry at their students because they voted, even if it's an honorary vote. The opinions sometimes are better than the actual vote, because if you see me all the time, I'm always on the losing side, like me losing, and everybody else is usually eight to one. But then again, listening to everybody's opinion, sometimes it helps even with a vote. And I would hate to have the community point the fingers up, but look at the way they voted. Their vote counted. And that's not what you wanted. Sometimes speaking about it is more effective than that actual vote. So I just wanted to let them understand why some of my, with my voting, really, because I don't want them to be scrutinized that way. Because, I mean, look, you got elected, you got, like, we got elected in the community. You got elected in the schools. And to me, I look at it as an honor to represent the people of this city, to be sitting here. And it's an honor for the students to represent you, for you to represent them, to be sitting in the chairs here. But the policy, the committees are really where the work is done. The full Board, as you see, we just vote, have a little discussion sometimes, and you see the winning and losing team. So if anybody want to be on the losing team with me, you know, hey.
No. It sounds like though, it sounds like you're in favor of adding that bullet about letting them opt into committees.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's really important. It's a really important piece for, it's a really good learning curve. So.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess, Mr. Sahu and Mr. Rogers are not the first student Board members that I have seen specifically targeted. And I've seen others that it followed them, it followed them in the community, it followed them on social media. And it was sickening at the time. And the Board took what action we could, but we can only do so much. And I don't ever want to see it again, but I will. So I don't want to participate in making it happen. Having said that, I'm willing to make the motion and put the question to the Board. So my motion is to send BBBF to the full Board with the edits on item number two, which is that bullet point saying, "Student members may choose to be assigned to one or more Board standing committees." And on number five, at the end of the first sentence, after, "Except the right to vote," say semicolon, "Students, student members may opt to cast a symbolic vote on motions before the Board." And that gives you an option and not a requirement. Anyone want a second? Say, if nobody wants a second, then it's dead in the water. Okay. All right. All in favor of sending that to the Board? Aye?
Aye.
And I just want it to be noted, and I think it already was, that Ms. Johnson was in favor of the first edit, but not the second. That way, the minutes are accurate. And for the reasons we just described, because we care about you guys and we don't want you bullied. But we still need your opinion. I just, I can't, I cannot overstate how helpful it is to have student members. During COVID, it was, the information that we got from the students was incredibly helpful, because none of us were in the classrooms. And so, or, you know, learning online. And so hearing from them, their firsthand experience was very helpful to everyone. All right, so moving on. The next one, we're back to less fun, less fun policy stuff and more general school stuff. Oh, you guys can always leave if you want to leave, or you can stick around to talk about all of the other fun ones. The next couple ones, we have local records retention, the organizational chart, which is super fascinating, the Chromebook agreement. That's interesting that you want to rescind it since we're doing Chromebooks. So we'll talk about that. And I would be interested in you guys' opinion on it, if you don't mind standing around, sitting around for a while. And then the other ones are about Policy Committee policies. Okay.[1799.24] Okay. So, local records retention schedule. If you guys remember last month, we passed EHB, which was the local records retention policy, and then EHBR is this lovely multi-page, it's one, two, three, six, six pages of, of a chart of what the record is, what the rule is about, like, what law covers its retention, how long it must be retained, and who's in charge of making sure that happens, which makes it very clear to anyone who touches records whether or not this falls under their wheelhouse to make sure that it's safe and protected or not. So, I move that we send EHBR to the full board.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yep. I was just wondering why some of the personnel stuff, it says plus 50 years, and I didn't know if that was, that was typical, if other schools do that, or it just seems like a long time.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I think this hadn't been updated since, I think, about 2012, so a lot of the statutes or legal authorities are reflected in what's supposed to be there, but I do agree with you, some of them seem quite lengthy.
And I think you'll notice, the plus 50 years ones are employment records and retirement records, and so if someone's retired, we have to keep track of what their retirement was and when they retired, like, pretty much forever, you know, years covers that. But if you'll notice, for a lot of the student records, the time is different. It's, sometime, some of them, if they are, like, their attendance record, that's kind of forever, so that even as an adult, if you need your high school record that you graduated, you can go back and get that. But things like Freedom Rejoiceance, it's six years. Disciplinary records, it's only three years, because nobody needs to know, now that I'm in my mid-40s, what my disciplinary record was when I was in high school. So, there's a lot of laws that cover all this stuff. I love this chart. I really do. It makes me very happy. All right, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. So we moved, all in favor of sending it to the full board, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is, what did I do with it? The next one is the organizational chart, I have put in the wrong order over here, which is CCA, which has been updated to incorporate the actual titles of people in various roles. And I think we've actually, have we added people as well?
I think more clarification, I'm kind of, you know, you know, for example, the, you know, director of ELL is just the director of ELL, Student Services at this time.
Yes.
So that's an example there. I think another piece is just, you know, shifting some of the responsibilities on the org shot around a little bit, so it's more accurately reflective of who's reporting to who. So I think this is the overall, I have a bigger picture of what it looks like. You know, the NTC leadership, you know, overall is kind of under the high school principal along with the directors of guidance, but they also, you know, have some contact with me, so we work together on some of those things. So I think this is a more accurate reflection of what we're doing. I think I have copies of what it looked like before, so you have, so subtle shifts from what it was over the last couple of years.
Any questions or comments? Lampier, sorry.
I just wanted to say that I like, I like the changes that have been made. You know, kids who have disabilities are not just in elementary school, they're in every, in every grade of the, of school, so it makes sense that it should be the superintendent that, that follows them. And the same with the ELL services, you know, kids can come in from other countries at any time. And so, hopefully, the ELL people are serving, are serving kids at all ages, so it makes sense to me to have a superintendent do that. So, thanks.
I do have a question on it. So we have director of ELL, it used to be ELL slash Student Services. What happened to the director of Student Services? Why am I not seeing them?
That was still the same person, so some of those responsibilities are going to be shifted elsewhere?
Oh, that's right, because we hired an assistant director of ELL. Okay, that makes sense. Hi. I'm gonna, oh, I lost my computer. I'm gonna move that we send this to the full board for approval. Second. All in favor, say aye, unless there's more questions?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Now, JICT, which Mr. Poska is asking us to rescind it, and I'm concerned about it because we just announced yesterday that we're going to do a one-to-one, oh, a one-to-one Chromebook situation at the middle school, and it seems to me that I want people to sign Chromebook agreement. Will this impact people signing the Chromebook agreement?
I was able to have a brief conversation with Ms. Johnson prior to the start of this meeting, kind of.
Shows the same concerns as me.
Wow.
And the fee too, right?
So, what a, rescind might be a strong word, certainly look to adjust, so I think one of the pieces that we're doing going forward is, we are, we are not charging students a fee for the Chromebooks. Students will just be receiving a Chromebook. You know, I think we want to have accessibility for all of our students. It also allows all of our staff to plan appropriately, knowing what students are going to be bringing them to class on a regular basis. In addition to that, and I think in, you know, specifically in JICT, there's a piece about a $25 Chromebook fee, so one of the changes that certainly we'll be asking for is a removal, removal of that. In addition, I'm sharing with you kind of copies of the Chromebook agreement in a Chromebook Use and Care Guide. So this is not meant to be, you know, maybe it is a little bit duplicative regarding the policy itself, you know, as I, I don't want to take, I know Ms. Johnson's going to talk a little bit about some of the work she did a few years ago to get this in place based upon the fact that there was nothing in place there, and there's a concern about having nothing in place, and I think those, those concerns are certainly valid, and I think warrant some more discussion. So, I really in support of having a policy in place, but also in support of making sure all of our students have, at the secondary level, have access and accessibility to these on a regular basis and is a regular tool, you know? I think some of the conversations we have, we're giving students, you know, pretty expensive textbooks on a regular basis to allow them the, the access there. I think, you know, there is some concerns going forward, you know, you know, if there are concerns about damage going forward, I think we'll have to reassess. But I think in the Chromebook agreement, there is verbiage in there that protects the district if Chromebooks are damaged, and it's the responsibility of the student and/or family to either pay for the repairs and/or pay for the, the, the cost of a new Chromebook to replace the damaged one.
Ms. Johnson, do you remember how many Chromebooks were irreparably damaged during COVID?
I think it was over 500.
It was a lot.
It was a lot, and it was, and I have been talking to Mr. Poska about it, and even last night at Finance and Ops, keyboards were broken, screens were broken, they couldn't be repaired. I didn't want to say last, but I'll say it here, animals urinated on it. I mean, it was, it was disgraceful. Like I said last night, you know, people have accidents on traffic, things happen, but this wasn't just minor accidents, this was maliciously damaged. And again, like I said to Mr. Poska, and I said last night, we have to hold people accountable, plus we're accountable to the taxpayers who are paying for all of this. We just ordered more Chromebooks last night, I think a thousand of them, for $200, I think $34,000. So we're buying more, and the question's coming up, the student population is decreasing. We're at nine, what, 9,100 students right now? That's, okay, that's right across the board. Yep, so we're adding more Chromebooks, but we have less students. How do we justify all that? But we voted for it in committee last night to send it to the full board, because we feel we have to make sure we have extras on hand, but I have a problem rescinding the policy. If you want to have this as a handbook, keep the policy. If you want to drop the $25 a year, and see how that goes right now, but the policy can also reference that we have a Chromebook agreement and the Chromebook Use and Care Guide that's within the policy.
I would be fully supportive of that, to have that in place, and I think that's a priori a more accurate description of the direction that we'd like to go. It still covers us as a district, but it also puts some, some of the onus on the families about the expectations of what we're going to have. You know, as again, as part of our conversation, although I was not here during COVID, I think this is a much more detail-oriented rollout of this plan, and the expectations are significant. So I certainly respect the concerns of the committee of what happened previously, and I think we're trying to take some precautions to make sure that we are not in that same boat going forward.
Oh, we're being proactive now, but also, my concerns is, if we get Chromebooks that are totally destroyed, what recourse are we going to have with the students and family? I understand if they're in that category, that they cannot afford to repair it, but, again, people have to be held accountable for damaging other people's property, and that's what my biggest thing is. It's like, if somebody comes in and ransacks a department store, you know, accountability, which we have none anymore, and that's what probably the problem is, but still, what's right and wrong? And we need to make sure that we protect our students, get the Chromebooks, and yep, we have to answer to the taxpayers of the city. So, I will go along with adding this to this and eliminating the $25, and if we find that it's not working, then we need to bring it back to the policy committee and adjust everything, if everybody's in agreement with that.
So, one second, Mr. Farley. So, in the existing policy, JICT, there are three sections that talk about the fee. Principles and Declaration, it says a technology fee is required, so we would strike that. The technology fee coverage explains what the technology fee would cover, but if we're not charging a technology fee, then we don't need to put that. So we would keep the part regarding losses that are not covered, and then on page two, under Generals and Conditions, the second paragraph says, "The fee will cover your device," so we would strike that paragraph as well, because it says, talks about the fee. And then the rest of it says, "We understand that we're borrowing this Chromebook, and if there's damage or theft or loss, we have to tell the school right away." That?
Right. So at least we have a policy to fall back on, and plus these other two agreements.
Yep.
And we can always put at the bottom of this, either attach it or see Nashville School District Chromebook Loan Agreement and Chromebook Use and Care Handbook.
One more second, let me just write it down, and then I will call on you, Mr. Farley. But if I'm writing while you're talking, then I'm not going to do, I'm not going to listen, and that's not fair. Strike out, so the fee. So, paragraphs three and four on page one, and... Okay. You're on, Mr. Farley.
If you returned one of the 500 destroyed Chromebooks during COVID, what were the repercussions to the students and parents?
Nothing.
So they would just have no fees or anything?
Back during COVID, yep. We, we ate the loss, and it was a lot, because each Chromebook is about $240.
And if they, and they didn't show, come back, and even if they didn't come back, we didn't, we didn't find them.
Many schools did not have a very good system for returning them back in. I know at Neighbor Works, where we were helping distribute to people with low income, we somehow managed to end up with six Nashville School District Chromebooks that none of the schools asked for. None.
Because, you know, they didn't know what they didn't know.
So if we were to go through with this policy, would we add repercussions for not returning or returning a damaged Chromebook?
So in the...
Under the Chromebook, Chromebook Loan Agreement, I'm sorry, I don't, that got that, that those copies got that far down?
The single page.
Single page, the last two bullets kind of have some coverage that detail what will happen. I think this, you know, I think to Ms. Johnson, Johnson's point earlier, there are accidents that do happen, and we can understand that. However, when there are malicious actions, and we see this continually, I think that's when we have to take action, make sure we protect ourselves in our investment here.
Okay.
I think that's a, that's a pretty good question, Warren, and I think also, you know, I think about the, you know, the deep, you know, when you think about putting this in place, I think about all the work that the teachers do to prepare their lessons. You know, you've been there before, you know, you know, bring everything to class, everything, you know, you get to class, go to, you know, prepare for a lesson, and not everyone has everything. It's a challenge, so the expectation is having the, you know, Chromebook available to add more voice and choice and student engagement to lessons is so, is so very important. So I think that's really where we're going, and I think this is something we're probably a little behind on as a district in comparison to other districts.
Oh, I absolutely...
And then I actually have one more question. So you said malicious actions. How are we able to determine whether it was an accidental or malicious act?
Hence, I think hence the conversation, you know, you know, I'll speak to my, you know, in my former role in the district, we, we had iPads, you know? When an iPad, when a screen would come back significantly smashed, I'm not sure that's how much of an accident, you know, did we drop it and fell? That happens, you know? When the corner is bent and it's all warped and wobbled, that seems more malicious to me. So I wish it was, it was clear, but I think it's going to, you know, you know, if you lose a, a kind of, something on the keyboard, you know, these things happen, but when it's more significant damage, I think we have to have some more significant conversations about what's occurring.
All right, sounds good.
Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
So I know it says here that if a Chromebook is brought home, that the device must be fully charged, blah, 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 and that if the Chromebook is brought home, that the parents are also responsible with the child, for the households whose parents maybe are not as capable of supervising children under the age of 13, which is the recommended age for unsupervision on the internet.
We're talking about 11 here.
Yeah, and we're talking about 11. You know, in my case, during COVID, my kid learned how to break into the Xfinity from my neighbor, and he's learned it from other kids that were also doing the same thing in their own homes, that they were all talking during their Google Classroom things. So I guess my biggest concern is, when they do that, they bypass any ability to do a parental safety net. There are no porn blockers if you're using a neighbor's random Xfinity. How are we going to protect our students from accessing material that we really don't want them accessing? Is it going to have the same restrictions that say the internet does here, where if I try to log into Facebook, everything shuts down on me?
I think certainly, you know, what's, that is a Pandora's box that you're bringing up, and once the devices go home, they will not have the opportunity to add on, will still have some of the opportunity to add on, you know, prevent adding on of apps or anything like that, but once those are outside our network, that is something that is, you know, a concern.
So will the internet, so right now, the kids who rented a Chromebook last year at the high school level, they weren't able to access certain websites on their district-issued Chromebook. Will that be the same this year, or will just bringing them out of the building open up, like, the entirety of the internets?
I mean, just, I mean, if, if a student is on their cell phone and they're on their own personal hotspot, they can have access to whatever they want.
Right, but my, your personal cell phone is different than a district-issued device.
A district device will be on, on the, on the network, so they will only, they'll be restricted by the network.
But I'm just thinking, my husband has a, a company laptop, right, that they've issued a laptop to everybody in the company, but his company restricts certain use on the laptop. Even if he's at home, he still can't go, like, he can't check his fantasy baseball league because fantasy sports are blocked by his, you know, his company's device. Is, do we have the ability to do that on these Chromebooks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Much like, through our network, we do have that.
Do we have the ability, if a parent does not want their child to be bringing it home, saying, okay, I'm okay with my kid having the Chromebook at school for school use, but, you know, I'm not comfortable with taking on the responsibility of knowing that my child may or may not be a young boy going through teenage years? Or is that going to affect a student's learning ability or homework capabilities?
I think that's a valid point. And I think that, you know, we deal with those on an individual basis. But I think it's what is the assignment that has to get done? Is it assignment that normally we would be asking students to do, have computer access at home to do that? Is it something that we're asking students to complete, say, via Google Classroom, which is protected? So I think, you know, you bring up a valid point. I think what is it that we're asking the students to do that the parents are uncomfortable with? But you're right, the parents should have a kind of a say in kind of the parameters of the amount of screen time and the access that students would have. So I think that would be an individual conversation with, you know, the student and the family and the teacher about what our expectations are or what we're asking them to do. You know, I think the other piece is that just because we give a student a device, that doesn't mean it's going to be utilized 24/7. You know, what is it that we want the students to know and be able to do that the Chromebook enhances that work and the engagement of that work for the student? So it's not going to be, you know, 24/7 their access. But I think there are times that I think this can certainly lend to more engagement with the lessons and with, you know, access to the standards that we're asking students to do. So it is a balance, you know? And I think that we're not, you know, I think that's something we have to kind of work through as we get this. I think to the point we've made with this policy, at least it's a starting point. If we see some other parameters have to get brought up, I think we have to kind of address that as we go forward.
I have one more question. I'm sorry, I've promised this is the only topic that I have a million questions for.
That's what we're doing today. That's the whole point of having a committee.
That is, that is a good point. So with these Chromebooks, if teachers are assigning homework that requires, say, Google Classroom, do we have a program in place to help the families that don't have access to Wi-Fi?
Yeah, we found during COVID.
Affordable connection. During COVID, affordable connection allowed a more open, like, they would accept anybody. The usual rule is you cannot have had Xfinity for a year. Nobody's going to go a year without any internet to get their internet knocked down to the $10.
I mean, I just remembered during COVID, we had a significant population that did not have access to Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
And so we were able to partner with United Way then and do some other things. But I don't know that our community has universal access to Wi-Fi. And we certainly have a number of students who are transient and who are living in shelters and who are living with relatives and who are, I mean, all over the place, who may not have consistent Wi-Fi access at home. Do we have an understanding with our teachers that we may not be able to be assigning topics that require research at home without some accommodation?
I think as we go down...
Sorry, I had that concern.
I think this is the same question, and I think you're absolutely right. I think as we kind of go down this road with these concerns, it's something we're going to have to be addressed. You know, what I can say from last year, you know, to kind of go back to something Ms. Ramis said before, there were not many families that participated in the rental of the Chromebooks, very, very, very few. Additionally, we did not hear a lot of concerns regarding lack of accessibility to Wi-Fi for assignments. That's not to say that that didn't occur, but we didn't have that as a major concern. Now, as this becomes a more prevalent tool for us going forward, that concern might spark up. And I think we have to kind of consider that as we go forward. But at this time, it has not produced itself as something we have to be concerned with on a significant basis. Not to say that it's not out there.
I have one more question, and then if you guys have questions, raise your hand. My question is about, is this a compulsory program for students in 6 to 12? So some families already have purchased, they purchased Chromebooks back during COVID, or they have, you know, their kids, especially at the high school level, who have their own laptops. Because we have a very diverse student body, and so we have people from all walks of life. If parents don't want their kid to participate in borrowing a school Chromebook, but they want them to use their, you know, their family, you know, whatever, like, my kid brings a laptop into school every day. Will that still be allowed? Or are they going to be pushed into having to have a Chromebook?
This time, we are pushing them into having a Chromebook just so we can control the network accessibility that you talked about.
My sophomore is going to be so upset.
So I think that is a concern. And well, that is, you know, something that we were concerned about is being able to maintain control of the network.
Sir Castellano, with your MacBook?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I also bring my laptop to school pretty much every day. And, I mean, again, when we're on the network, there's still, I mean, many things you can't access. We can't go on Facebook, Instagram, all that stuff. The only difference I really see is that on like MacBooks or certain laptops are better than others. So like, connection and that speed and everything is better. Aside from that issue, I was going back to like the accountability part. If students kind of sign up to bring the Chromebook home, they should, they should know that there's, there would be consequences, in theory, if there was return damage or anything like that. It's just like if they bought their own and damaged it, if they wanted, at least if they wanted to have access to it, they need to pay to fix it or something like that, so.
So I'm happy to make the motion to make Ms. Johnson's suggestions to the changes of JICT. And then obviously, this is, I gave it to Mr. Sato. Those forms are internal forms, they're not policies. So the district can make up their own form, and we don't have to approve the Chromebook agreement that's there. Right? Right. However, I have to say, I have some significant reservations about not having an opt-out policy for our families who don't want it. So I'll send it to the full board, but I'm sending it to the full board with reservations. I mean, because I think, I think providing access for all of our students is an important piece of equity. But I also understand teenagers.
I'll second with just a little note that none of the loan agreement, the parent letter from the school, the Chromebook Loan Agreement, the Chromebook Use and Care Guide, or this policy says, hey, kids, don't access adult content or games. And we might want to sneak that in there somewhere, like, only used for educational purposes. WhiteHouse.com is not a thing that you do.
Know what that is? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with that, but there's no way you're going to control it, not unless you have like firewalls and everything up on that that blocks it. So if the school district can do something to make sure that can't be put on those Chromebooks, I'm all for it. But once it leaves and it goes on their internet, there's, there's not, there's nothing you're going to be able to do about it. It's a shame, you know?
In case, I agree with the opt-out need. My poor kid's going to hate me, by the way. God, he doesn't watch these.
Yeah. Ms. Lampier?
I just have a little bit of concern about the fact that the policy that we have, I'm not sure it reflects the Chromebook Loan Agreement closely enough. And also, like, the thing that I'm concerned about mostly is it says that the family is responsible for the Chromebook and the peripherals. But in the Chromebook Use and Care Guide, it mentions that the Chromebooks should not be taken anywhere else. It shouldn't be taken to an outside computer service for any type of repair or maintenance. And I thought that might be something that we would need to put in the policy, just, I mean, you just want to make it as clear as possible. Like, even in the Chromebook Use and Care Guide, it's one line. I think maybe it should be a bullet in the Chromebook Loan Agreement.
So on page two, where it says, "By signing below, we should replace all of those bullets with the new Chromebook Loan Agreement." Right? So they're the same?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we add?
Yeah, I just have, I have to write that part down.
Okay.
And poor Ms. Kinsella is not going to be able to read my hand. And then, is that not having it serviced in the Chromebook Use and Care Guide?
Yeah, it is. It's at the bottom, under E, the Chromebook Repair. It's the last bullet.
Okay.
And I think that's the only place that it says it.
Okay. And add... Because it says the care and maintenance of the Chromebook, and real approval will be the responsibility of the student and parent. But that's not really true, right? The truth is that if there's a repair, you need to bring it to us. So we're going to replace it with that, but then we're also going to change the last bullet. No, we're going to change the second to last bullet. Say, the care of the Chromebook is a responsibility. Get rid of maintenance. And then add a bullet that says, "Chromebooks that fail to work properly must be reported as soon as possible to the school."
They shouldn't be brought to an outside computer service.
I stole yours, and I'm writing on it. Can I have it forever? Actually, to give it to Tara, so that she can...
Just this once, though.
I ran out of my, I ran out of room. All right. Broken or failed. And this one. So we're going to add properly that line and another bullet that says, "District-owned Chromebooks should never be taken to an outside..." I'm sorry, Ms. Kinsella, as you are reading my chicken scratch and listening to this, and they don't exactly match up. I apologize, but you can call me. Okay. This, this, and this go together so that she has all of those notes in one spot. Okay, so I have, I'm going to refresh my motion here or restate my motion. It's to amend JICT with the strikeout regarding the fees on paragraph three and four on page one and the second paragraph under General Rules on page two. And then also on page two, we're going to strike out by signing below that all of those bullets under there and replace them with the bullets on this sheet called Nashville School District Chromebook Loan Agreement. Only, those will be changed so that the second to last bullet, we strike through maintenance. And then it says, "The care of the Chromebook shall be the responsibility of the student and parent guardian." And then we're going to add two bullets. One that says, "Chromebooks that are broken or fail to work properly must be reported as soon as possible so that they can be taken care of properly." And a second bullet that says, "District-owned Chromebooks should never be taken to an outside computer service for any type of repair or maintenance." That cover?
Okay. Need a second again?
Yeah.
Second then.
Okay. And I think I really want an opt-out, but I'll go with the flow, I guess. Anyone else have strong feelings about an opt-out?
I have strong feelings about an opt-out.
Dr. Poska, can you discuss with us the educational benefits of not letting people opt-out?
Can we, can we move to bring this to the full board and have the discussion about the opt-out of this policy at the full board?
We can ask Dr. Andreid and Ms. Bishop what kind of time they're going to allow us on the thing. I do think it's important that we get a Chromebook policy that is accurate and reflective before school starts on the 29th. Well, yeah. And we don't, we only have one meeting between now and then.
Doesn't one of our policies already state that parents are able to opt-out of any part of the curriculum at any time?
Yeah, but it's not curriculum. It's like opting out of a chair.
I mean...
Which we do make reasonable accommodations for people, but...
So that actually gives me an idea. What if we just put a bullet in there stating that if a family has a need for an opt-out, that accommodations can be made on a case-by-case basis?
At the building level.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that in...
Mr. Arbogast, you can expect another email from me tomorrow morning.
Because it says... It's all crossed out. So General, Generals and Conditions will be that.
Would it go in the first paragraph?
I don't have it on, I don't have a page with that, because I only have one page of this policy. Yes.
Add it to the...
To the very first paragraph, where it says, "The Nashville District believes that providing Chromebooks for students enhances their educational experience and provides increased opportunities for learning. As such, we provide our students Chromebooks for additional, for, I'm sorry, for their educational use for the school year." Period. Parents wishing to opt-out may...
Parents wishing to opt-out of utilizing a district-issued Chromebook may discuss their concerns with the principal at the building level.
Yeah, wishing to opt-out.
Of a district Chromebook and may speak with the principal at the school level to discuss their own, use of their own electronic device.
Their own device.
Okay. Parents wishing to opt-out of a district Chromebook are encouraged to contact the building principal. And I missed the rest.
And will be considered on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, requests will be considered on a case-by-case basis.
To use their own electronic device.
Okay. Requests...
Got to put in the electronic device, because otherwise they won't, they'll say you're opting out of the Chromebook. So what are you going to use?
Yeah, I think that it should be allowing to opt-out, just like you want us to be able to opt-out of these and just have the paper printed. I think it works better for some kids.
Principals are not going to like us.
No, you know, the Chromebook is a device, it's a tool, much like your math book or your history book. So, you know, when you say opt-out, I know what you're talking about. We don't let someone say, you know, we'll provide those accommodations. So, you know, if Ms. Johnson didn't want to bring home the entire history book, because that's usually the heaviest of the books that she making copies to bring home of that chapter to study it that night. So it's more accommodations for what's going on. But it's still a device that we need to embrace and utilize as we're going forward to promote student engagement.
My thought was opting out of them taking it home. So, for example, yeah, you can, you can have this Chromebook during the day, but you need to leave this at school. The school has to provide a location and a plug to charge it overnight or whatever.
So the way I wrote it was, "Parents wishing to opt-out of a district Chromebook are encouraged to contact the building principal." Period. Requests to use their own personal device will be considered on a case-by-case basis. So they're kind of two separate issues. And we'll let the principals make those calls. And good luck to them. I would not, I don't want to be that, like, parents is not going to like us at all. Go ahead, Mr. Castellano.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I feel like this might add a lot of work to the principals, because like, people who just want to use their own devices, like personally, I'd probably want to use mine, but I mean...[1790.14]
I, I know, I, I mean, I have a, I have a sophomore who's taking a V-Lax class right now, which won't be done. And so I know that he's going to want to bring his personal device to school so that he can use eBloc to work on economics.
Like, is there a desire between a, a differentiation between like a desire and a need, like that kind of stuff?
To me, some of those decisions aren't board-level decisions, they're principal-level decisions. And I don't want to tell the principals which cases they think are reasonable, because I don't know.
No, it, you know, Dante has a, what's that, MacBook? Someone might have something else, you know. It, sometimes it does become a personal preference, but as Ms. Lampier pointed out too, and Ms. Don, we need accessibility for all. And I think that's the piece there, you know, you have your desire, there are students who don't have those. And I think we want to promote some more consistency with what we're doing. This kind of allows us to all, make sure that that's taken out of play. And I think that's important, you know, and I think, you know, certainly if, you know, we have a conversation about, if you have a MacBook and you're going to be able, you're responsible for it. You know, I think that's something we can talk about. I think, you know, I think the thought process was before is making sure we have, you know, it's equitability for all. This still does it because we're still talking about accessibility. You know, is it another step? Yes, I don't know if it's a, how much of a challenge it would be, because I think we, we have gone to great lengths, you know, to really monitor who is receiving these devices. I don't think that happened before. So there's a lot of things in the background that are going on to make sure we can know, you know, Dante Castellano got, you know, Chromebook number one, two, three, four, five, you know, and that's when the Chromebook he's going to give back. So I, I, I agree with the, the concerns that you have. However, I think that's something we can manage going forward as we, we jump into this. I think it's really important that we just have that availability for all, so we can really jump into the teaching and learning.
All right. I don't want our, our concerns to prevent kids who need them from getting them. I guess that's my biggest worry, because I would like kids who need them to have them for day one. Go ahead, Ms. Lampier.
I just wanted to say that there's nothing to stop someone from taking a Chromebook and then not using it. Like, I have my iPad here from the school district, and I bring it to meetings, but I don't use it for anything outside of meetings. So if you, if you want to do some work on your MacBook, or if, if, you know, if another child wants to do some work on a different computer, they can bring that to school and use it at school, right? Yeah, so, I mean.
I mean, we don't stop kids from bringing their personal, you know, pocket computer cellular phones to school. And we really discourage teachers from trying to take those away or put them in boxes or anything, because they're very expensive devices, and we want kids to have that personal responsibility of keeping track of their own electronics.
Yeah, so I think, I think that there's kids that might not want to use the Chromebook, but they don't necessarily have to opt-out and, you know, ask for accommodations and stuff. Just take the Chromebook and put it someplace and use it if you need to use it, and don't use it if you don't need to. I think, I think the kids, it's sad to say, but I think the kids who don't need the Chromebooks would be the ones who are most likely to take care of them. Because kids who grew up in more chaotic environments, they're the ones who, because there's so much chaos at home, they, they might not know how to take care of things.
Yep.
But they don't have any other option. They will need to have the Chromebook and use it all the time. So I feel like, I just feel like this policy is geared more towards being equitable. And if you have something extra, you know, use the extra thing. So, sorry.
I just, I want to point out that I, that I, I do appreciate the district moving towards a one-to-one ratio, because in past years, we've had situations where teachers were competing for Chromebook cards. Right? Because there are lessons and there's curriculum that is only accessible through the Chromebook or, you know, if someone was using their personal laptop. But we can't ask people to bring in personal laptops. And we can't have teachers not being able to teach their lesson plan because we don't have enough Chromebooks for the number of students that we have. So I think it's a step in the right direction. So I, like I said, I have made the motion with the changes that we read. And for Ms. Kinsella, I have written them all down on papers that I stole from everyone around me.
I got one more.
And put them in the book here for her review later. All right. So the motion is to approve it with the paragraph one language. We just added paragraphs three and four on page one. And the second and third paragraphs on page two that cover fee, all that is going to be struck. Also on page two, underneath, "By signing below," all of that's struck. And then it's replaced with the Chromebook agreement with the changes that we made to make it accurately reflect the usage guide. That was a lot. I made the motion, and then we changed it a lot. And then Reagan has seconded still?
Yes, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So this was a really good working session. We're scheduled until 7:30. We never take up our whole amount of time, but tonight, we kind of are. And we still have several things. More than half. Right? We still have all of our policy things on the agenda. So at this point, we have nine minutes left of our allotted time. And the next policies are policy adoption and review, committees and delegates, and then the policy committee policy. None of these are going to impact work that the district is doing in the next 60 to 90 days. So I'm comfortable with keeping them in our queue and bringing them back, unless people have a burning desire to dig into one of them, and there are nine minutes left.
I feel like they're kind of all grouped together, they're very related to each other, so I think that it's best to wait.
Mr. Poska, I know that the, that the district has some policies coming up in September. Does the board, does the committee have any objections to Mr. Poska and I looking at the district needs versus these and arranging our next agendas according to timeliness as opposed to which one was next in our arbitrary order that we had?
I don't have a problem with that. Personally, I also would be happy to do a second meeting to kind of tie up some stuff.
I don't have any objection. I just hope that we can get to it at some point, because I think that this is important to get done. Hopefully, hopefully, it, it just looks like it needs to be all done in a block, so we're going to need a good amount of time.
Which is why we tried to put them all, and then we had some things pop up that the district needed. And I try to do the district, like, student requests, district needs. These things are important to me.
If, one of the things I just try to help clarify as we go forward, we do not have policy BGAA in our own handbook. This is from NHSBA. This policy and, and Ms. Kinsella, and when, in your packet, she already formatted in our, in our format in case there was some feedback for it. But I urge us to consider reviewing BGAA. And if we like that, I think that would kind of stem some of the other discussion about some of the other policies that we have in place about either rescinding them or, or, or probably just rescinding them, because they're already included in BGAA.
Right.
So I urge you to, you know, as we go forward, and I, I agree with, you know, the time is, is kind of coming to an end here. But if we accept BGAA, I think we can then have some, you can have some conversations about some of those other policies that are already there.
I, I feel like they have to be a block.
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting BGAA in, because there are some things that aren't addressed in it and I had some questions about some other things. And so I, 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 not, they're not big bad questions, they're just little questions. But I'm hoping that we can add them to the BGAA, and that way we won't have to keep the other policies.
Exactly. And the reason that Mr. Poska and I kind of, we didn't pre-write, you know, a policy, because usually we, some of the edits we can do, and some of them we need input. But in this case, we really need to have the time to sit down and wordsmith some of these and make sure that they cover everything we want to cover. And so at this point, I think I would move that we, I don't even think I need to motion. I think we just need to have no objection to holding the next one, two, three, four, five policies until we get a block of time again. Any objections? No? Okay. With that, Mr. Castellano, Mr. Farley, did you guys have anything else that you wanted to put on the policy queue that you want to shout out in public? Or do you want to email me? Or are you guys good now?
I know in the upcoming school year, I'll be working closely with Student Senate, and we're going to try and revise some policies. So I'll reach out to you independently and let you know what we plan on doing.
Fantastic. Do you guys have the dress code policy on your queue for that?
That's our number one. So we'll, in theory, as soon as school starts, we'll start working on that, start reviewing and discussing. And I'll get back to you on that.
Super excited about that. I've been trying to get a district-wide, gender-neutral, diversity-conscious dress code since 2017. And I fail every time. So I'm really excited to hear that the students are going to take it up, because you guys know more than me about what's fashionable and what's appropriate. And so I'm excited about this. All right. Mr. Castellano?
Yeah, just to add to that, while sitting here, I kind of thought of just one policy that we might want to look into in the future is one having to do with like AI and ChatGPT in general. I know that's probably a big topic right now, but, but I don't think we have anything like officially.
It's ironic that you mentioned that, because that is something that we discussed about the need to create a, a district policy for that. So that is also hopefully forthcoming, but that's something that's quickly emerging, and it's very complicated. So I, I appreciate the fact of bringing this up.
I wonder if that would go under like behavioral code or instructional policies, like where that would fit in?
Integrity, yeah.
Right? Because it's about academic integrity and plagiarism. Okay. Having said that, I've used up our nine minutes chattering. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Somewhere to.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 7:27 PM.